Well, good evening. It is Thursday, October 28th, 2021, and this is a reg-- the time is 6:30 PM, and this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Independent School District 191 School Board. And welcome to everyone watching at home, attending. Thank you for your time this evening. Director Connor, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight with the approval of tonight's agenda. I will seek a motion for approval of tonight's agenda, please.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, seconded. Seconded by Director Said. All those in favor for approval of tonight's agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any not in favor indicate by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into the information section of our meeting tonight and receive a report about class size. Presenting will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Director, or Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, Directors. Just bringing to you tonight, it's something, we haven't done this in the past, but to provide you with a brief report on class sizes, where we are this year, how we get to where we are, and then answer any questions which you might have once we are done. Every spring, we go through the process of allocating, a general allocation to each of the sites. That is based off of enrollment. And we do that based upon our projections of what enrollment will be for the following year. Most cases, we can hit the numbers pretty close. Because if, if you've seen any of my charts, I have multiple, multiple years of trend line data, knowing pretty much where folks are going to roll up and where they will be at different points throughout the, the summer and into the fall. That formula with the general allocation is just the starting point. It's kind of the base for each of the sites, but it isn't the whole story. So when I sit down and I have a formula that gives a general allocation to the high school based upon 39 students, that's just the core. On top of that, they also receive compensatory allocation, which is four more FTEs. Then they'll also receive allocations based upon their EL population and the needs with, with their multilingual students. Then they'll receive an allocation based upon special ed. Then they have a base allocation, counselors, deans. Base allocations are those allocations that aren't dependent upon enrollment just for the building to function at that level. So by the time it's all done and over with, what starts off as a 39 number quickly drops down. And you'll see that in a little bit later. The middle schools, we use 37 for that formula. It's very similar. The middle schools receive 1.5 FTEs for their compensatory. Plus on top of that, we have what we call school within a school. That is our middle school level ALC programming, which we need a middle school level to have our ALC programming for the district-wide portion. That also comes out of compensatory, it's called 314. Okay? So everything that's in 314 has to be given back to the 314 programs or middle school programming. Then on top of that, again, also, they have allocations for their, their multilingual population, their specialized population on top of that. Elementary, our overall class size average is 25.5. That's kindergarten through grade five. And they have compensatory money. They each receive one FTE for compensatory. They then receive title money, which is distributed based upon the formula from the state. Then there's also an AdSIS grant, which is a special ed prevention program. So there's FTEs that's provided that way, as well as special ed money. I think I said EL money. And then also, we have some A&amp;I slash compensatory for advanced learning specialists that's allocated to the buildings. So there's a number of different resources that are given to the buildings. So even though we start off with a base formula allocation for the enrollment, there's all sorts of other areas that supplement that as we go through the process. Also, I'm in the business of doing the allocation based upon enrollment. At the elementary, it's very easy to ma-- to monitor the class size average because I have one teacher at a grade level, and I can, I know how many students are within that class for the FTEs. Secondary, six through 12, becomes a little bit more difficult because at the building level, principals are looking at the registration for the different courses. So they're taking their allocation and having to weigh, do we hold this class? Do we not hold this class? If I hold a class of 20 students, somewhere on the other side of the spectrum, I'm going to have a class of 40 to 45 students. And they have to determine, but if I don't have this class of 20, 25 students, I'm going to have seniors at some point who aren't going to have the credits to either finish their pathway or finish their credits in the coursework in which they're working towards. So that becomes more of an art for the secondary buildings. Just want you to know that on the front end, I am not the gatekeeper of class sizes throughout the district, just the allocations that go out. And I'm looking for that arrow. Elementary class sizes. The green column under FTEs is what our current FTEs are for per grade across the district at this moment. Okay? So first grade, I have 29.5, 28 first, 20, our kindergarten, 29.5, first grade, 28, 26. You can read through the rest. The enrollment at the time that I put this slide together was 615 students in our kindergarten all the way down through the numbers. Then you see the class size average. This class size average is based, again, just on the general allocation. Okay? Principals then at the local level can use their compensatory or their title to supplement and decide at their building what their building needs are, and they can either reduce the class sizes further, or they can use them for other support services, interventionist, whatever along those lines. Okay? The columns over to the right, that's talk about minimum, maximum, target, plus or minus, and then our average. These are the ranges per our grade level. Minimum for kindergarten would be 20 students. That's, that's where we want to, anything below 20 students, we start calling it a cool spot. Okay? Anything above 25, we start calling it a hotspot. We'd like to end up somewhere in the middle across the district, and that's, those are our target areas. When they start becoming hotspots, that's when I keep an eye on them to say, okay, are you just one over, or are you suddenly four, five, six over? And are we sustaining that over time? Because if we are, then we're going to want to either readjust our FTEs from another location or add an FTE to that site. As you can see, we are in the negatives compared to our targets. So that middle number means across our elementary as a whole, on average, we are below the middle line. And it isn't uncommon that this year to even be below our minimum line in some buildings. I'm going to put a lot of that right now, we have a couple of different things going on. One, our enrollment declined around COVID. Two, the enrollment increase into our virtual academy. Okay? So as far as my charts go year over year, last year and this year, kind of blow the whole thing up. So we'll just have to take those, put the little asterisk by them going forward, but just know that's, they're kind of anomaly years. When we look at our buildings, for elementary, I can show you the enrollment, and then also the FTEs, the general FTEs that have been allocated to those buildings as well. And then you can see the average class size. This is just based on our general numbers. We've had this discussion in the past, our smaller buildings are less efficient. They're just less efficient. I can have two teachers at a grade level with 44 students, 40 students. I can't get by with one classroom teacher for that grade level. But because I have two, I'm going to have a class size of 20. Okay? I can have 75 students in another building, have three FTEs, which is my upper limit for kindergarten, and they'll be showing up at 25. The larger buildings are more efficient because I have more teachers to spread the students a month. So when you look at a building like a Harriet Bishop compared to some of the other buildings, they become a little bit larger just because out of efficiencies as well. Looking at, and again, I apologize, but I am giving you the averages. That's how I kind of roll in my area. So at the high school, we have 21, 2,138 students. I have seven class periods. I have 116.555 FTEs. This is every FTE, okay, that's at the high school. And then what I do is I like, okay, a teacher isn't teaching seven periods. They're teaching five of the seven periods. So if every FTE that I had at the high school was teaching five periods, my average class size would be 25, just about 26 students in each class. That's, that's if everything was equal. Everything isn't equal. I have specialized classes, I have EL classes, I have college and a school classes, I have the AP classes, I have the pathway classes. All of those classes are on the smaller side of the scale. They're going to be anywhere between eight to 25 students with a teacher on any given class period. Well, when that happens, somewhere else on the other side of the spectrum is going to push the class sizes back up to around, again, anywhere between 38 to mid 40s. Okay? When that occurs. The other thing that I have going on at, I believe at the high school as well as the middle schools, I have team teaching. So I may have a special ed teacher along with a general ed teacher in the classroom of 35 kids. Well, now it's not 35 kids really per FTE, it's 17. Also, that impacts my averages across the district, or across that building. Eagle Ridge and Nicollet Middle Schools, again, same type of a process, but instead of five periods in which a teacher and FTE is teaching, it's three of the four periods. Okay? So my class size averages would be around 17.8, 16.17, 18 to 17 in each of the different buildings. Again, I'm taking my general allocation, my compensatory, my EL, my special ed, school within a school. And if I divvied it up equally, that's what my class sizes would be. VA secondary, I have just under 12 FTEs for 280 students, teaching three of the four classes, or five of the seven, for an average of just over 31. Okay? I put underneath the VA, plus six overloads. In the next slide I'm going to show you, it's going to show you our enrollment trend for VA at the secondary level. I might as well show you, and I can, just remember the six overloads. Last spring, we did a survey with our parents, seeking how many of you would, are planning on sending your child to secondary for virtual academy. Number came in very stable, we had a couple of reports over the summer. We sat around 180, up until the first day of school. Then, all of a sudden, on 9/7, I'm moving from 190 students up to 250 students, and we're not done yet. We're climbing up to 280, 290 students at the secondary level. School has already started. We didn't see this coming until we were there. Those six overloads were, okay, where did we lose students within the system at the high school? How can we move them, or how can they take on an additional class to offer all the courses needed for this additional amount of students? Those six FTEs, not FTEs, those six overloads had nothing to do with class size. We just didn't have enough courses that we were offering for the influx of students. Okay? So that's why we had to offer, go to somebody who was already teaching a full load, saying, hey, for us to be able to handle these additional 70 students, we're going to need to offer at least six more courses. Would you be willing to take an overload? So an overload at the high school is, I'm teaching the five classes already out of the seven periods, and I'm willing to take on and teach at least another course. So the high school, of course, is 48, 47 minute-ish, somewhere in that area. A VA class is about 90. So what that does is immediately takes out their ability to do a supervision period and their prep. Because they're teaching the whole day now. So we're giving them, I believe it's $2,000 for the overload as base, plus their lost prep time. Okay? If it's a different type of a class, I'm teaching geometry all day long, now suddenly I have to pick up an Algebra I course. That's a different course from what I've been teaching. Now it's $3,500 base, plus my lost prep. For our average wage for our teachers, that can be close to $7,500 just per that overload. Okay? Not only did we have this large influx of students moving into VA at the last minute, we had 52 students of that 200 and, let's say, 90 for the thing. 52 of those students were going back and forth. I'm in VA, nope, I want to go to high school. I'm in the high school, I want to go to VA. So we had not only a growth, we had a lot of movement going back and forth between the buildings at the same exact time. A little bit squirrely to get your hands on as to where these numbers were going to land on. VA is where I have hotspots at the secondary level. Okay? And it's going to be somewhere between 12 to 16 different classes that we're looking at from the middle school to the high school level. Steps that we have been taking with this process. If you have seen some of my charts, so about after that first week of school starts, we start losing students, district-wide. Over the last seven weeks, our enrollment has already started to decline. It's been declining, but we haven't even hit our large peak where we'll lose between 45 to 75 students at our semester break. So we're on the slide. So the first thing that we do is we watch to make sure there's what's called a 15-day drop. If a student doesn't show up for school for 15 days in a row, the state says, you can't report them as one of your students. That's, you have to remove them from your roster, and you can't continue to get revenue for them. That's a 15-day drop. Okay? That way, we don't have phantom students on our rosters. The next, so we have to go from the 7th, which was when school started, 15 days, school days. So we're not even looking at the 22nd, we're up to closer, around the 27th, near the end of September for our 15-day drop to occur. Then we come up to our October 1st count, what's our actual student count? Are these numbers going to drop? VA has declined, but not as much as the rest of the district. Again, kind of an anomaly in that sense. So we started saying, okay, mid-September, Don and the middle school and the high school principals started saying, okay, how are we going to move FTEs? Can we move FTEs within our buildings to cover this? If we suddenly gained 70-some students, did we lose them internally? The middle school is going to be able to make some adjustments at the quarter break. Middle school quarters, natural, that's a good time to make changes. High school, it's a little bit more difficult, they'll be looking at the semester break. So they have some plans as to see how they're going to be able to break some of these courses up and try to reduce the class size. That was one step, they started planning for that. The other thing is, we put out postings for additional FTEs to at least create a pool if we're going to continue to see a large number of the large, the overload, not the overload, the hotspot courses. That way, hopefully, we'll have a pool in which we can select from, and at these breaks as well, bring in new teachers. Not real optimistic in this labor force to try to get somebody that comes in that says, yes, I'm willing to work an hour a day. But we have tried. The other piece would be to split the courses up. So we would take a class that is over 40 students, and 40 students for VA is a magical number because that's under state statute, that's kind of the limit that it's supposed to be. It's kind of a poison pill in the bill. The, it shouldn't really be 40, it should match what your district average class size is at secondary. That's where you would want that to align. It's kind of a false ceiling. Because I have a number of other classes over 40, as we've already explained, at the high school and the middle school. Suddenly, 40 is like, oh, horrible at VA. Okay? We may have to split that up. And like I said, we're going to be looking at, for those overloads, to split those courses up. That teacher is still going to be teaching 45 students. But now they're going to be teaching the 45 students and getting 7,500 plus for that time. For, for an overload. Okay? Because they're going to lose that time. Within statute, that says we have to do 40 students. It also provides the clause that we can appeal to the commissioner and ask for a waiver. It seemed prudent to also seek a waiver. Because with the number of courses that we have that are over 40, plus the overloads, if we had to go down that path, you're looking at close to $100,000 a quarter to offset those overloads. A quarter. Okay? Before we started using expenditures for that, we wanted to say, hey, commissioner, we're in a pandemic, we're in a labor shortage, this is our first year, we had late enrollment, and, by the way, our values and standard says, we're not going to turn anybody away from an education that seeks one, regardless of how they want to see it or experience it. That's our value. So we haven't heard back yet, let me rephrase that. We've had some emails go back and forth, we haven't received the final decision yet. We are waiting for that. If that decision doesn't go in our favor, to be compliant with the law, we will have to divide those classes up, and everyone that has been doing an overload, first quarter, first semester, whatever, will experience and get paid for that overload. Okay? So we are exploring a number of different avenues to try to address that, and we're kind of waiting till some of the different pieces start falling into place before we can move forward. Let's make it clear, we are not advocating large class sizes. That is not what we're about. However, given the conditions that we are currently under, it also doesn't seem to make sense to spend between $300,000 to $400,000 for teachers to teach the same amount of students asynchronously, especially at the high school. Eighth grade is more along that model. Sixth and seventh grade are more of a synchronous model, but they slowly are weaning them once they get to eighth grade and moving away. We have other ways to use those resources if we can, but if we must, we will. Outside of VA, everything else, like I've shared, is pretty much within our parameters. And we're in pretty good shape with that. That's a lot to take in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for board comment and questions at this time. Anybody want to go first? Go ahead, Director Webb.
You mentioned that there are certain classes right now that are over 40 at the high school, how many?
I don't know. Again, the first part of my presentation, I really don't know, class by class by class, that are over a certain number at, at the high school or secondary. I give the allocation, I know what the average should be, but as far as the number of classes, that may reach 40.
I'm just trying to gauge it against, you know, like, as far as the VA classes that are seeming to be over that amount, and what seems to be troubling for the teachers trying to teach those classes comparison to at the high school, not virtual. In comparison, what kind of classes those are that are over 40 as compared to the ones that are virtual and over 40. What, is it the capacity as far as like the type of teaching they're doing that allows for, you know, having more students in the class? I'm just trying to gauge, you know, if there's a difference between those classes as opposed to the VA classes.
I'm sure, I'm sure that every teacher would be able to demonstrate how it's different. But I'd get that between a kindergarten teacher and a chemistry teacher as well, that their responsibilities are different. The high school has, per capita, as many classes that are in the 40s because, again, we may have classes between eight students, 20 students, whatever. And if my class size average is a little over, I think 25 or 26 in that area, to get to that number, there's going to have to be a number of classes that are over the 40 range as well. The difference is, with the students that I have in my class that's over 40 within the high school, they're all sitting right there in front of me, so I'm dealing with behaviors as well as interruptions or having to answer questions, along those things. At the high school level, I'm teaching asynchronously. So that means the lesson goes out, and then as students need support, I have my office hours during those 90 minutes in which a student can reach out and contact me, and I can follow up and help in that way. It's a little bit, it's just a different model in that sense. I still have 45, whatever, amount of papers that I'm going to have to grade and go through, but there's also the demands that are right in front of me at that particular moment are less at the high school with the asynchronous model.
So compared to like last year, before we had the virtual academy, and we were all virtual, did we have the issue, though, of class sizes being larger?
Well, last year was different altogether. Because at secondary level, not only did you have, we had more FTEs that we were pumping into some of this, but we had A and B days. We had cohorts that were alternating. So your class sizes by design were smaller. So instead of a student having seven classes in which to choose from, on one day could be four, and the other day would only be three. So I'm not getting, you know, 35 hours of a course, I'm getting, well, half of that for the week. So yes, the class sizes were much lower in that sense, and they were more synchronous, I believe. That's an Amina question. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I have.
Yes, go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Stacy, for all the information and data. I think we can all agree that virtual academy is something that is totally new that we're diving into, right? Was there transparency in the beginning for any of our instructors in regarding class sizes? When there's transparency, we can avoid many other concerns that have been voiced. So I just want to understand what that conversation was like for some of the instructors that do virtual academy, and if they were aware of the fact that we might go over the limits when it comes to classroom size.
The communication piece, I can only answer from my standpoint, from me. Again, my communication was directly with the principals on that piece of it. How are we going to address this? What is our plan that we're going to implement? It was pretty clear, the teachers knew that the class size limit was going to be 40. But we also knew from our past history that we have declined. But we also knew from our past history that we have declined. And so will we have forty throughout the rest of a quarter or the rest of the semester? Or will that start dipping down below? We didn't know. We just don't know. And some of that took some time to, for it to become actual.
All right. Okay. Oh, I thought you were done.
No, no, I, the, the other component of this was, in my conversation with Wendy, I did share with her that we were exploring a number of options, which were our last slide. Now, I didn't go into the detail on all of those. But if, if they were aware that there was a forty student limit, they were also aware that the waiver could be sought. And with that, it was like when a teacher is looking at between seven thousand dollars, potentially up to twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars for some of our teachers for overloads, for teaching the same amount of students, I really wanted the commissioner's answer with no shading of the issue.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just wanted to add, so transparency about forty, so they have the students. So they knew. Are you asking, do we acknowledge that there was forty?
Yeah.
So yeah, I, I can check with the principals. I do have messages that said they were told by their principal, but I can verify. So it's just the word transparency. So they're aware, we're aware, the principal's aware.
Right. And I'm just saying, was there a timeframe, a time limit given to the fact that, okay, it might have, it might start at forty, but we hope that it, you know, grow, either decreases or not decreases. That, that, that conversation.
That's helpful. Thank you, Director Said.
Typically, before I start weighing in and start giving different scenarios, I want to make sure that I know what variables I'm working with. So until I was really clear whether we were going to receive a waiver from the state or not, that would kind of determine the direction which we were going. Otherwise, I'm letting them know, well, all this stuff is going to happen and then that may start getting into confusion and people start hearing one part of the message, but not the whole message as well.
I just feel like, we all want the best for our students, right? Especially in this new way of education, which is the Virtual Academy. But we also understand the overload and the overwork that some of our instructors might feel. And acknowledgement for me is a big thing. And just to understand that in order for some of the instructors who do have that higher number, right? In order for them to get paid, they, they would have to sign up for other semesters? Or is it, is it tied down for them to sign up for other semesters in order for them to get paid for this current semester that they have large class?
No, if, if we end up having to do the overloads, we'll pay for this quarter and semester.
So it's not tied down to that instructor wanting to do it next semester?
No, it, it's, it will be based upon the, the schedule in which they're having to work. Now, we will not pay somebody for third or fourth quarter until third and fourth quarter get here because I may not need to offer that course or have to do an overload. Again, with declining enrollment, our numbers continue to change. But if we have to do overloads, folks who are currently in a situation where we'll have to split that class up, we will definitely pay the overloads.
Okay.
Without any other strings or need or attachment from there.
All right. Thank you.
So, um, do we currently have any teachers working overloads at this time?
Again, with, with VA, we, we have six teachers at the beginning of the year when we had the influx of the students. Just to make sure we were able to offer the courses. Those overloads were not as a result of class size.
Okay. And then is there any confusion or can you explain the pros or cons of this waiver with the commissioner? And how it would impact the six that currently carry an overload?
Those six it won't impact because they had five courses already in which they were teaching, plus they took on a VA class. What we would be looking at are those teachers who are teaching VA and then through the magic of scheduling, I guess, have two classes being offered at exactly the same time to satisfy the law saying that, well, instead of forty-four students, we have twenty-two students in each of our classes.
And then so the waiver would provide us extra income to pay teachers for an overage?
The waiver just says it's okay to have forty-four.
I see, I see. Okay.
Additional questions?
Thank you. Let's see. Just a couple questions. I haven't heard the term interventionist in a long time. We have, still have interventionists in our buildings, but certainly not in the numbers that we used to.
No, not in the numbers that we used to because when we came off of, what was it, two thousand twelve, where the state paid back money, the, the board at the time wanted to make sure that we didn't have a fund balance that was bloated. So we used a lot of that for interventionists within the buildings. Right. So no, our numbers are nowhere near the same.
Okay, thank you. And just so I'm clear, from the very beginning, principal leak and other principals have been obviously monitoring class sizes.
More times than, how do I say this and not bring shame to myself? More times than not, I'm, I am the gatekeeper. I am the bearer of bad news. Whereas like the numbers don't bear it out that we would add an FTE. Principals across the district advocate for their buildings relentlessly. Yes, they are aware, but also again, we had the fifteen day drop. We had the late influx. We had our trends. We wanted to make sure that before we started putting FTEs into place, we weren't throwing money away for a class that suddenly would dip down well within the parameters.
Right. And when did we submit the, the waiver request?
A little over a week ago, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. So at the end of September, we knew that we were continuing to have problems. Why wouldn't we have submitted the waiver request then?
I can answer that question. So, Director, members of the board. So in the last slide, you did see we have posted. So what if we post and then we have it, why would I ask the commissioner for an appeal? So you kind of, we have multiple strategies. We want them to be successful, but then they're not. So.
So if you get.
It wasn't something, I, so really, I hope these strategies would work. And so we're trying to fill the positions, but as Stacy said, with the labor, we're not getting the hits. And so that is an option we have, is an appeal.
And if you, not having any experience with this MDE appeal process, if we were given the waiver, are we then forced to use it or if we discover that we no longer need it?
Well, the, what the waiver would do is just waive the fact that anything that we'd be out of compliance for classes over forty. That's all the waiver is going to do. And again, we're not advocating for large classes. We're not going to suddenly start trying to fill these classes up or anything along that line. We just are asking for an understanding that we are, one, within the pandemic where a lot of folks are choosing to do virtual learning. We're in a labor shortage. We're unable to fill these positions. Those are our two primary reasons. And it would help us to continue with our value of saying, we're not going to turn students away. Some districts have closed the gates. Another thing to be aware of, that in VA alone, we have sixty-five open enrollment. You know, that's, that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars close to, for revenue coming into the district for a full-time ADM. There's benefit. There's upside. And if we want to see the success of the program in the long run, we want folks to have a fairly positive experience with it. And I know there, there's just this constant push and pull with this whole piece on how we navigate this.
And I completely hear that. I completely hear that. I guess just when I think in terms of tools in our toolbox, if we were to, to submit a waiver request and receive it, but find we don't need to use it or choose, you know, that some of those other tools are better addressing what we need to do. And certainly, we don't want to turn anyone away. I don't know. I, I personally would have thought that tool would have been already, you know, already at play in September, given what we knew then. And I guess, you know, just as a district, it, it is our responsibility to be transparent with our community. And I just want to take this opportunity to reiterate my own personal expectation for ongoing transparency and accountability to the board on this topic and on other significant events as well. That's it. Thank you.
Just to clarify with that, seeking a waiver from the commissioner of education is no light feat. You know, the law was written to allow for it, but I don't think the, the lawmakers were inclined that this would be happening all the time. You know, we, we post, we look for alternatives, we do everything that we can before we take that Hail Mary approach to trying to get that waiver in place to see if that also might be an option. It really is the last tool to use.
Additional questions or comments?
I have one more comment. I guess I felt like maybe we should have kind of had this vetted out better ahead of time just because we already kind of, I would, I would, you, you said it yourself that we probably would suspect that people would be interested in virtual because of the fact of the pandemic and maybe would expect that higher enrollment. And I guess my feeling is that we, it seems like we're kind of now in a pickle. And maybe we should have, you know, had some of these things better laid out sooner. And now we wouldn't be trying to scramble to figure things out.
And, and we had the pandemic all last year and over the summer as well. And, and like I demonstrated, our enrollment for VA at the secondary level was flat right up until the first day, pretty much first day of school. So if I would have started to see a trend line in July, early August, something like that, that was starting to increase in that direction and it was only climbing, absolutely. We didn't have that until boom, we started school.
And we had the high transmission. So I don't think, and I said this in the COVID report, I think I and others were hopeful we were not going to be in the midst of where we had a high transmission of COVID. And so as that became reality, that's when we saw the influx. So yes, I can hedge my bets. I'm gonna go with more people wanted in person. I, I, I just, so I hear that, how to hedge our bets a little bit more, maybe in a different way. And with a pandemic, I, I just don't have a crystal ball. So.
One, one of the things that I'll attribute to the fatigue, and it is fatigue, it's emotional fatigue for everybody. We really felt, we didn't have all of the, the executive orders, we didn't have all the mandates, we didn't have the numbers. We were so hopeful that we were going to go into this school year somewhat normal. Emotionally, we weren't fortified for what we ended up having to deal with. And that is taking a toll. It is taking a toll up and down the line. Food service, EAs, teachers, administrators, families, students, everybody just feels weary. It's like, really, it's only MEA? It feels like it should be March. That's just where, that's where the system is. I am not in any way, shape or saying that everyone doesn't deserve an overload payment at all. I'm not advocating for larger class sizes. I just want to make sure we're doing the most prudent thing we can with our finances while providing an education to all of those who want to do it through our Virtual Academy. That's our goal.
And I, I would add board members to that too. I spent some time with board members today.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
Yeah, there, everybody's exhausted.
Yep.
And we're all feeling it. So thank you for your comments about that.
Additional questions or comments?
I, I was curious. You, you mentioned a couple of times about the, the back and forth of people going from virtual to in-person and back. Is there anything that we could or should be doing to try and address that and minimize? I'm sure it's extremely disruptive, not just for the students, but for the teachers and the staff and.
Counselors, yep.
Everybody, exactly.
New schedules. This is not going to be the norm going forward. We will not have this type of a situation going forward. And I can get back to my predictable charts. I can start tracking when our enrollment starts going, registration in the spring for VA. We'll start feeling a little bit normal. We'll get some trend data to be able to predict. And on the front end, we'll make, we'll overstaff. I, I may make the recommendation, we just overstaff. Especially if there's any hint of COVID still out there. It's better to be prepared in that manner than trying to play catch-up. I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree. If that's, if anything, that's one of the lessons we're learning through this whole process. And some districts have closed the doors and said, nope, we're at our cap. We put four FTEs into this, that's it. You know? If, if Burnsville is not known for anything, it is known. We will do everything for our students and our community. And it, it takes a toll on staff to make that happen. It does. But that's where we are for our kids.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I think my only other comment would be that if the intention is to try to overstaff, it's kind of impossible to do in a labor shortage.
Thank you. Yes, but we will do what we can. It's much easier in the spring.
With graduations of new professionals?
Graduation with new professionals. Also, if our classes can, or if our enrollment continues to decline to save positions by shifting them over to VA to a degree. And I, and I think we'll have a better feel because remember, approval from the state occurred fairly late in the spring. So we didn't follow our normal registration process like we do at the middle school and the high school. We'll have a better read on that this year as that's, that's rolled out at the same time.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to go over a couple of things real quick. Director Connor, do you have a question?
Uh, no, just a comment, but go ahead.
No, no, I'll, I'll wrap up. Go ahead.
Mine was kind of a wrap up too, is just, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. And the teachers, of course, and I know they're stressed. I've talked to some of them and they're stressed, but they still care about the kids too.
So I'd like to just return to slide three. The particular one is elementary class size is a table there. I appreciate that you brought us numbers. That's always very important conversation. Numbers also though tend to drive some different perspectives and I want to make sure we're clear since we do have publics watching now or in the future. So correct me if I'm wrong on these points, but again, you know, we're looking at averages here. Minimum and maximums are not trigger points either, are they, in the system? Not automatic trigger points, no. Correct. So people need to understand that, although their objectives and, and guide wires or swim lanes we're setting up, but they're not necessarily triggers. So. Okay. And then again, I think you kind of touched on this, but going up a couple more slides down and then the, the high schools average and such. And we're well aware that, and this is a conversation we often have with members of the public, that yes, but I know of a class that's forty-five kids or whatever. But as you pointed out, it's, you know, we also have classes with eight or even less sometimes. I think I heard one time one with two and it or something. So. So this is an average. We need to understand that. So I'd like to touch a little on the virtual reality, Virtual Academy. Maybe one day Virtual Academy will be virtual reality, but Virtual Academy conversation. So I think we need to acknowledge this is something of a perfect storm with a lot of variables involved. We have staffing pressure. The great resignation was last month. We have the. We have the, the COVID numbers were not necessarily doing what we thought they would do. And perception of COVID is, we couldn't manage, we couldn't anticipate that either, not only just COVID numbers, but the perception of COVID in the public and what it means. We're launching a brand-new program. This is not what we were doing last year, this is a whole entirely different program. So to that last point I made, I want to make sure that we're clear about that from this board table, that I mean, I see this as launching a new product. You know, we're, we're a company putting out a product and this is our big launch. And I acknowledge that we want to make sure every student has the opportunity. So if a family feels like, well, they were planning on going to the high school and they don't have any sort of the traditional methodology or reasons for being in Virtual Academy that we may have designed the program for. But now because of the environment with COVID maybe, or, well, COVID, let's just say COVID, they've chosen Virtual Academy. Have we given consideration to maybe they get a different virtual experience than, than, than the ones that have signed up for the core product? And the reason why we, we brought about Virtual Academy? And if we haven't, that's fine. I just put it out there for the thought.
Amina would like to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah. Amina would like to respond. Thank you.
I do allocation, I don't do programming.
I understand.
Thank you very much, members of the board and superintendent. Just in response to that, last year we did provide a very kind of different experience for students. We designed then the Virtual Academy to be that kind of unique, different setting, different organization, different levels of independence, focus, those types of things. What we are finding, however, is we have those families who are having their students enroll in Virtual Academy because they are concerned. They are concerned about health and safety, they are concerned about protecting their families and their children. With that said, to provide two separate types of experience will simply contribute to our staffing shortages and the ability to cover those different sections. Already we have six teachers who are doing overloads because we didn't offer enough classes. And now we're asking, you know, what would happen if we broke those off into even smaller bits? And, and then asking students to choose which kind of track or which kind of experience they want to have. I, I think instead, working with teachers to try to provide as much of a quality experience and keep within the parameters of the programming that we have identified for Virtual Academy, making accommodations and adaptations as our CPSS tools have guided us to do so and to support those students as much as possible to move forward. Knowing that the experience that they have may make them realize they enjoy that, that particular experience and prefer it. Or that they are just thankful that they have the opportunity for a robust educational experience. Even in the times where, where they have so many health concerns. And so my recommendation would be not to pull back, but to move forward and to provide as much as possible for those students in the programming that we have.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my final comments are, you know, for both Dr. Battle and you, Stacy, acknowledging the uniqueness of the circumstances. Knock on wood, we will not be here again. And the, the amount of variables involved with the puzzle. I, I do think the, you know, every opportunity presents, presents the opportunity for us to improve on our processes and our, and our, the way we do our jobs. And my encouragement would be that we take to heart a couple of things out of this, you know, the necessity to move as quick as possible and the transparency with the community and specifically with this board about what's going on, so we can be proactive about the communications we have. So appreciate the report this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll move now to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH, respectively. Dr. Battle, superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and members of the board. Tonight I will be presenting this report solo. So I want to start my report by stating that the data I'm going to present tonight includes COVID-19 cases for Dakota and Scott counties and our district data. Also, it is anticipated that the last steps for approval for vaccines for children ages five to 11 will happen next week. And tonight I will share important data regarding our draft plan to participate in Minnesota's vaccination program. And as well as updated COVID-19 testing opportunities. I'd like to take the time, last meeting, we talked about this response to the pandemic takes multiple roles within the organization. We frequently talked about our nurses and tonight it's, I wanted to recognize our principals. October is National Principals Month and the work the principals, associate principals and site administrators have provided in response to the pandemic. To refresh your memory, in March of 2020, they supported staff and provided leadership to transform our educational delivery system in eight days. Throughout last year, using their creativity and flexibility as leaders, their work helped us ensure we successfully implemented multiple learning models despite great uncertainty. And this fall, as we continue to be in the midst of a pandemic, they have stepped up their support as we return to in-person learning and launch the new Virtual Academy. I applaud them and thank them for their dedicated leadership and focus to provide the best learning environments for our students. Our community continues to be in a high level of community transmission for COVID-19. However, there is a little glimmer of hope, we're seeing the data, the trend line, Stacy talked about the trend line, it's starting to plateau. So I wanted to share, there are some new ways MDH is reporting data specific to schools. So the format that MDH, oh, excuse me, I think my pages are out of order. So I'll have to let you know, our lead licensed school nurse, Bernie, gave me all this data. So this is where she started, so excuse me. The format that Minnesota Department Health uses to report schools with five or more cases was changed today. Traditionally, all schools that met the criteria were included in the list. Currently, schools included in this list will provide three weeks of data along with a range of positive cases. So I think it's zero to five, six to 10, 10 to 19, there's some on there that are up to 60 in their weekly. So there is a format in that public data. Now to the seven-day case rate for positive cases. Both Dakota and Scott counties are seeing a slight or plateaued, trend downward, or a slight plateau, which is a similar pattern throughout the state. However, caution is necessary due to the recent Ed Minnesota activities and travel by people, if you looked at scenes from the airport and this weekend's Halloween gatherings. Dakota's rate is 228, down from last week at 234. The seven-day rolling count of positive cases for Dakota is 140, down from 144 last week. And the last information Bernie captured for us on 10/14 shared that 41% of cases are on people ages 30 to 39. 20% of cases are in children under 12. Last year at this time, the percentage was 5%. Scott County, from the period of October 10th through October 23rd, their case rate per 10,000 is 44.06. And the ages 12 to 19 cases represented 35.29%. Ages 5 to 11, 43.96%, and ages 0 to 4, 25.94. Scott County also reports that Savage is listed as the third highest in positive cases for the county. Positivity rate, Minnesota for the week is at 7.2%. And the highest positivity rate age group for Minnesota is in the ages 10 to 19 years of age. The rate for this group on October 10th was 8.79. Dakota County positivity rate is currently at 6.7% and Scott is at 8.5%. Regarding our 191 cases and investigations, as of 10/18, we have been informed of 20 positive cases among staff with 16 cases resulting in a case investigation due to infectious, to being infectious while in the building, one of our buildings. For students, we have been informed of 106 positive cases with 80 requiring a case investigation. Investigations completed during the week of October 11th was 10, October 18 was four. And this week, we have completed eight investigations for individuals infected in school. As of today, we have 196 students out due to the effects of quarantine. Now on to vaccinations. The FDA Advisory Committee made its recommendation following a review of data from clinical trials that found the Pfizer vaccine is safe and provides strong protection for children ages five to 11. And this was made on October 26. On November 2nd and 3rd, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices will meet to provide best practice recommendations. That is the last step for approval. So clinics, pharmacies and counties have begun planning for vaccination clinics. Scott County has scheduled a clinic for us on November 18th and it will be held at Eagle Ridge Middle School if approval is given. And more information will be provided. We will also have Dakota County dates once the approval is forthcoming and we will send out communications widely. We are hopeful that the second, both counties, the second dose will be done before our winter breaks. So that's the plan, so we want to kind of look at the dates and make sure we get the first, they want to make sure they get the first and the second before our students are not in school. Saliva screening and testing, which is optional. All staff members were given reminders and directions on how to sign up for free Vault screening that is available to all those who live in Minnesota. We also have enough Vault tests for two screen tests for 325 staff members who have indicated they would like to test through our participation in Minnesota's program. And then we'll order additional tests depending on availability. Student, student testing, we will continue to partner with Dakota Child and Family Clinic in Burnsville. And they provided the following update and information. Their average daily 191 screenings are around two to four with a range of zero to eight. Total screening since September 14th, around 70 tests. Current eligible students following the completion by, by eligibility by a nurse can get information to set up the appointment. The lab results are coming in about two to three days. And nurses are trying to send emails out before school hours so parents can get their, excuse me, Dakota County is trying to send the test results out before school hours so parents can take their kids back to school. Most school days, there is a staff on-site that speaks both Spanish and Somali. The test is still free. Using your insurance card helps the federal program for uninsured go further. And they are using the PCR test, which is that short nasal swab, some of our parents were asking about that. Also, Minnesota has provided some free, we have BioNext Now COVID tests for students based on our October 2020 census through MDE's testing program. We have ordered these tests and will be delivered to school buildings for distribution at a later time. These are the Rapid Antigen Tests, designed to go home with students and to be administered with their guardians or parent assisting. And lastly, operations, at the last board meeting, we shared that we were developing a plan for meal pickup for our students in quarantine. And I mentioned tonight was the 196 we have. So we started that this week and we've changed the site to DEC because we have our regular 191 pantry here and our brain power in the backpack operation is here. So every Tuesday from two to five, parents who have students quarantined will receive information. And it's information about this distribution. So we have volunteers all ready to help out. And then families in need for the meals to be transported to them will be given a number to call. And that concludes the COVID-19 report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Any questions or comments from the board members on the COVID-19 report this evening?
Yes, I was just wondering, so the students that are quarantined, they don't necessarily have COVID, they're just being quarantined because of?
Close contact and all those definitions, yes.
So we don't have numbers on the ones that actually have COVID? Or do, okay. Because I didn't, I didn't hear that.
So the confirmed cases?
Yeah.
That's our number.
Oh.
So let me go back. 20 positive cases and 100 for staff and 106 for students, 106 positive cases.
Since the start of school or?
Or yeah.
As, yes.
Oh, okay.
But we're, and I gave you the number of investigations.
Right, okay.
Based on, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So they're still getting exposed even though they're wearing, teachers, because you mentioned the teachers, even though they're wearing masks and shields and.
Well, they're not wearing masks and shields, they're wearing masks. Some might, might be wearing shields, but that's optional. And remember, they are only in, they're in our buildings eight, nine hours a day or so, something like that. They have lives outside, so they may have gotten it stopping at Cub or Target on the way home, too. It's always a plus.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying they got it from school, I'm just, yeah, just trying to figure out as far as my safety. So, but also, the rapid tests, is that the one where they eject the saliva into the tube, is that that, that one or no?
I'll have to take that question to a health professional.
Okay.
But I'll capture that.
Well, the, the distinction with rapid and then the other style is just the time turnaround on it. And the one is slightly less effective or has different parameters around it versus the other one, so.
Yeah, if you know, okay, that's the two, one.
And I've had the nasal swab, one was a piece, one was a rapid test and one was not.
Oh.
Both times it was the same type of test, so, yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Webb?
The clinic that's scheduled on the 18th for Eagle Ridge?
Tentatively.
Tentatively, will that be open to everyone in the community or is that just for our students?
So that's one of the final, there are several questions as they're prepping, so one of the questions today, it's for our 191 students. So for example, we've had vaccination testing at our high school where it's open to our, Burnsville High School had one, Burnsville Alternative. But one of the questions that we posed to our public health officials was, could employees use these sites if their children are enrolled in a different district? So that's why they're going to have a lot more information out, so thank you for that question. We'll see with the additional information, if it's not answered, then please ask again.
Can we go back to the quarantine, because I just want to clarify. People who are in quarantine were deemed a close contact and are unvaccinated? Is my understanding, if you're vaccinated, my understanding has been you don't, unless you're showing symptoms, you don't have to quarantine.
That is the information that was shared with us previously.
Yes, okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hesitating because you know I'm not the health.
Yeah, I know.
I hesitate, I don't want to be on the record saying, well, Teresa gave you information, so thank you.
That was one of the reasons that.
We miss you, Bernie.
That was a reason for implementing the mask mandate, was it limited the amount of necessity around.
And the vaccination, people are giving. And the vaccination, people are giving information that some of the staff, they don't have to quarantine because they have been vaccinated.
Okay. No further questions, thank you. We'll move now to the committee, board appointment, and school assignments reports of our portion of the information section of our meeting this evening. So I'll start with committee reports, we'll jump to the policy committee.
Thank you. Yes, the policy committee met Monday, October 18th, and we reviewed a number of policies. All of them are on tonight's agenda. And the committee meets next on Monday, November 15th at 5:30 PM here at Diamond Head in the Egan Room. This ends my report.
Thank you. And I'll just let you go right into the negotiations committee.
No report from negotiations.
And we'll then move to the legislative committee.
Yes, the legislative committee met on October the 12th. We meet the second Tuesday of each month. We reviewed, as we're starting to ponder and think and address what be, what be some of our legislative priorities as a district, we discussed and talked about two position statements from AMSD. One is on state accountability assessments, and the other one is on eliminating the revenue per pupil limit on long-term facilities maintenance revenue. And so we had some nice discussion about, about that. Our future meeting, we're hoping to have one of our senators or representatives in terms of addressing our, the bill that we would like to move forward. That concludes my report. Oh, wait, yep, not that one, that one, yes. That concludes the legislative committee report.
That does end our stand, our point, standing committee reports. I was going to next move to board appointment and school assignment reports, so if you'd like to...
There we go. So 917, Intermediate District 917, meets the first Tuesday of every month. And when we met, we had a presentation. They, as a district, are also looking into DEI work in terms of the board as well as furthering into their, their staffing and teaching and curriculum as well. And the other thing that they're really diving into right now is strategic planning. So there's going to be several extra meetings going on here over the next couple of months regarding strategic planning for, for Intermediate 917. And they are still experiencing, like everybody, significant staffing shortages. That is prompting them to reduce service or put, and close some services temporarily. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any other board appointment or school assignment reports to bring forward tonight?
Is the AMSD considered one?
Yep, certainly, yep.
Okay, for, we had an AMSD meeting on October 1st. We had a panel of students that were, I believe they were junior high, they were very articulate, and the panel of students were there to ask, they were from the Twin Cities, and they were there to answer the question of how they weathered COVID-19 for the last 18 months. We just, they wanted a student's opinion, since they're the ones that are mostly affected. And they had some very interesting comments. I'll just give you a few. They said the, they found it, well, the negative parts were that they found it difficult, the curriculum was insufficient, they felt helpless, they didn't have sufficient Wi-Fi, they missed the teachers and the structure. They found it hard to stay motivated, they needed resources, like their mental health support, and also they liked their extra services, like their basketball and sports, they missed that. They had family responsibilities to younger kids, younger siblings, and so it was hard to learn at home, and they were tired of playing adult and dealing with adult issues. But the positive things that came from that were that the teachers were there for them, they only had a half-day of school, and they wondered why they can't continue that. But they had, because they want to have a half-day of school and then use the other half for resources and services as part of the other, part of their day. They also said teachers had more time to give them one-on-one time. They saw that, they feel that they need a different type of curriculum, a change. They said that they need more in-school and after-school services for themselves and the teachers. Teachers and schools seem to need, oh, no, that's the same thing. Teachers need more, they said teachers need more mental health training, and they found they want to find new ways of learning. And these are changes that they want, they said that we would like immediately, they said they need race and ethnic backgrounds of teachers trained in equity and racial identity, staff and teachers of color to be recruited for racial identity of the students so that they can be, so they can feel more like they're enough. And, let's see, what else did they say? Oh, and they need more clubs to help social interaction at least, for at least 30 minutes a day. They said they need diversity in, in teaching because it creates motivation, a feeling of safety and belonging, and meet every student's needs where they, and where they feel that they should be met. And then that was mostly what they talked about in the meeting. The other things were just like the grants that are supposed to be coming, and the Tier One licensings for the teacher and racial equity program, and then they're also working on that bill. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any others?
Director. I have a quick Hall of Fame report. Figured I should, since we had the induction ceremony a couple of weeks ago. We had 11 inductees to the Burnsville Hall of Fame on Friday, October the 8th. There was an induction ceremony, and because of COVID, they had to be a little creative in how they did it this year, so they had a reception in the Commons area at the high school. And then the actual ceremony was in Marath Center. So if you know the high school, that's a pretty long walk. So that was some feedback that we got from some of the inductees, was that it was a little bit of a walk for some of them, but also very positive feedback that I heard from several of them who were not at the high school when the Commons area was built, obviously, because it's new, and they thought it was incredible, and they really, really were impressed with the building. So that's always, I know it, but as a parent, but it's always good to hear it from people, from alumni who have maybe have not been in the building for a long time. The last, our most recent meeting was last Wednesday, October 20th, where we mostly debriefed this year's process and the ceremony and talked about what could be done differently or better, or more, do more of for next year, and begin thinking about next year's process. There is a new chair for next year, because Jim Green's term ended. I believe the new chair is the treasurer, Bruce Anderson, and we are taking a bit of a hiatus and not meeting again until after the holidays. Our next meeting will be in January, where I assume we'll be ramping up for next year's selection process. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other, yes, treasure up?
Oh, just one thing I'd like to add for this panel of students, they were all different ethnicities.
Okay.
All right, my report is for the Chamber Policy Committee. The Burnsville Chamber Policy Committee met earlier this month and received monthly updates from both 191 and the city. Part of that morning's discussion also focused on local business concerns surrounding staffing, applicant, and resource shortages. Kind of similar. The pandemic has negatively impacted local employers in many ways, and maintaining staff is one of them. We are in similar boats between local businesses and the school district with unfilled positions, competitive wage demands, and a gap in being able to fill openings. As part of my assignment to the Chamber Policy Committee, I sat on a panel of local elected and appointed officials on Monday, October 18th. This Changemaker event, as it was called, was moderated by former Burnsville mayor, former state official, and General Encyclopedia on all things political from local to state level, Dan McElroy. He's just a wealth of knowledge. Panelists included City Council Member Keely, Chair Dakota County Board of Commissioners, Mary Liz Halsberg. Unfortunately, Commissioner Workman was unable to attend, and so Chair Holberg sat in, in her place. And also Burnsville Economic Development Commissioner Jeff LaFavor. The event was designed to inform local community, to inform our local community about opportunities to serve, either in an elected or appointed capacity. Panelists shared our reasons for choosing to serve our community in this manner, what we have learned along the way, and why it's important for business perspectives to be represented in positions like ours. As well as to share tips on becoming involved. The conversation was recorded and I believe will be posted for public viewing by the chamber. I would like to offer my gratitude to the chamber, fellow panelists, and our audience that night for coming together to encourage and welcome participation in local government and municipalities. It really was a pleasure to listen to fellow panelists and learn a little, learn a little bit more about their why. This ends my report.
Thank you. Any additional reports? Okay, that'll wrap up the information component of our meeting tonight. We'll move into the business meeting and start with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. So at this point, I'll ask if there is any item on tonight's consent agenda that board members wish to move out for separate consideration. Seeing none, I will then call for a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, and a second, please.
Second.
Second by Director Werb. All those in favor of voting on the motion in front of us, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. Seeing none, the motion passes anonymously, and we will then now move to new business for the evening. First item we have in front of us is to approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2021-2023 Master Agreement with the Burnsville Principals Association. Bringing forward this recommendation, Stacy Sobin, Executive Director of Human Resources, again, welcome Stacy.
Good evening. Just bringing before you, we have a tentative agreement with the principals. We have 20 principals currently in the unit. We started meeting together on August 24th. We had three meetings to kind of reach an agreement. We removed some dated language, we added $500 to the Pro 3B match each year, and we had a two-year increased cost of $206,000, which is an MSBA two-year package of 3.89%. And you want me to read the recommendation for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Bringing the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2021-2023 Master Agreement with the Burnsville Principals Association.
I will look for a recommendation, please, for the, or, excuse me, a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Director Said. I will open it up for any conversation, questions, or comments on the motion in front of us. Seeing none, I'll just ask one question upon assumption, presuming the ratification of the motion this evening, when will we have an opportunity to sign this? What's the process for that?
There's such minimum amount of changes on this one, I would hope as early as our next board meeting.
Perfect, thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving the motion in front of us indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor, indicate by saying nay. Not hearing any, the motion passes anonymously. And the next item under new business is to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 413, harassment and violence. Speaking on this issue, on this recommendation, Stacy Sobin, again, Executive Director of Human Resources.
We have a lot of red line on the policy. Really what it is, is a lot of condensing from a number of different listings of protected class and replacing it with protected class. MSBA has also recommended some wordsmithing in different places. We've added cross-references to our cultural proficiency policy. Outside of that, there really aren't significant changes. It looks a lot worse than what happened, so. With that, just recommend approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 413, harassment and violence.
Thank you. I'll take a recommendation, or, excuse, again, I'll take a motion for the recommendation in front of us this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Director Connor. Any questions or comments on the first reading of this policy changes this evening? Okay. Seeing none, then I will ask for a vote on the motion. All those approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any not approving, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes anonymously. And then that will bring us to the conclusion of tonight's approved agenda, and with my apologies to Director Connor for forgetting about this at the beginning, we are adjourned.